Now I'll call to order a regular meeting dated Thursday, January 20th, 2019. I'd like to remind everybody to silence their phones and any other electronic device. If you'd like to speak on one of the items on the agenda, there's blue slips in the back of the room. Please fill those out and bring them up here to Ms. Jessica before the item comes up on the agenda. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Gilery.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Associate Pastor Mr. John Griffin to lead us in prayer.
Mr. John.
Shall we pray? Eternal God in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this privilege. As we come, dear God, to discuss the plans of this parish, this city, we pray for the jurors, dear God, that you would give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Dear God, we pray for our community. We pray for this parish. And dear God, we pray for other city officials that serve in this capacity. We pray, dear God, that everything be done decent and in order. This is our prayer that we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Ms. Kathy.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Angipon?
Here.
Mr. Bears?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Fornum?
Here.
Mr. Gidry's out of town this evening. Mr. Gilery?
President.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Latour?
Here.
Vice President Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie was unable to attend, and President White?
Here.
You do have a court.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Item number four, appearance by Mr. Michael Reese, candidate for Louisiana State Senate, District 30. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Michael Reese. And, Mr. President, jurors, I appreciate the opportunity to briefly share with you a little bit about my background as I seek the senate seat in Senate District 30, which is all of Vernon Parish, all of Board Guard Parish, and about two-thirds of the landmass down the western corridor of Calcasieu Parish. So very quickly, on my background, my father's family grew up in Lake Charles. My mother was from DeRitter, and we were raised in Leesville. After going to college at Northeast Louisiana University in Monroe, now ULM, and receiving degree in finance and commercial banking, where I served as the student body president, was elected by the other student body presidents at all the colleges in Louisiana to serve as the student member to the Louisiana Board of Regents, which governed all of higher education in Louisiana. So very good education in state government at a high level very early on. Came back to Leesville, purchased a trucking company that I grew up working at as a laborer in high school and through every summer of college. We have locations in Vernon Parish, Board Guard Parish, and Calcasieu Parish. As a matter of fact, in Calcasieu Parish, we're located next door to your facility on Industrial Avenue, and have appreciated being able to work with the jury and actually purchasing a piece of property next door to that warehouse to allow us to grow as well. So certainly appreciate that. From there, I got involved in commercial and residential real estate development and commercial air charter. And in 2005, recognizing that Fort Polk was one of the biggest drivers of the economy throughout our region of Louisiana, currently the largest single employer and largest single economic impact at $1.8 billion a year, we started a group called Fort Polk Progress, recognizing that economy had suffered through the years with boom and bust cycles where the fort had been opened and closed, admissions had come and gone, and yet we were fairly ineffective as a community at dictating the future of that installation. And I want to personally thank the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury and your leadership because at the time we started this organization, you were one of the early supporters of that. When we were challenged with two major downsizing efforts in the last several years that would have decimated the economy of that side of the state of Louisiana, the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury and others were great team members that came to the table both financially and in your other, and in other aspects to work with our congressional delegation and defend that base against those major cuts. And so I've been very proud of the coalition we built around the state of Louisiana, the efforts we've made in the congressional delegation inside the Pentagon to support that installation and let it continue to be the driving force in the economy that it's been. At the same period of time, I'm on the Board of Directors of Merchants and Farmers Bank. We have locations in Vernon Parish and in Calcasieu Parish. With our newest location, we just opened a few weeks ago in Vinton, Louisiana. On the board of the Central Louisiana Economic Development Alliance, where we focus on business recruitment and workforce issues, just like the role of the Southwest Alliance here in the Lake Charles area. I've been on the Board of Trustees the last year of the Rapids Foundation, a $300 million public health foundation, services nine parishes throughout central Louisiana, where we granted about $10 million a year to improve the quality of life and health education, health and education outcomes throughout that region. I've been on the Board of the Gulf Coast Strategic Highway Coalition, Louisiana Governor's Military Advisory Council as a charter member, and continue to serve in that capacity, and on the Executive Board of the U.S. Association of United States Army. With all of my free time, I also am very active in the Leesville Alliance Club, the Association Defense Communities, the Sinla Chamber of Commerce, the Vernon Chamber of Commerce, the Board Guard Chamber of Commerce, the Southwest Alliance, where I've been the only person that lives outside of Calcasieu to ever receive their civic service award, something I'm very proud of, the work we've done together, the West Cal Chamber, the Louisiana Motor and Transport Association, and Louisiana Bankers Association. But it's been through all these various volunteer efforts that we've kind of reached some limits in how much I believe we'll be able to accomplish without changing state policy and getting involved at that level. And I mentioned just a few of those that impact our ability to be successful in recruiting missions at Fort Polk and business and industry in central Louisiana. Our state's high cost of insurance, our poor road infrastructure, spousal employment opportunities throughout central Louisiana region, our national reputation for our public education outcomes, and of course, the invariable uncertainty of our state budget. I also understand the importance of being a regional team player. I understand as we've taken delegations up several times a year to work for our congressional delegation, inevitably, we talk about issues related to the port of Lake Charles, dredging related issues, and how important that port is to the economy of this region. We talk about the infrastructure investment that's absolutely vital and the need for input that maintains input from all the constituencies around Calcasieu Parish as we make those investments, and the workforce training needs that need to be met in order to continue to grow the economy down here and take advantage of all the great investments that you guys are making. So I guess I say all that to say, at the end of the day, whether it's been my professional involvement in my career, or whether it's been my involvement in these various volunteer efforts, my background is purely that, of being a regional team leader, being a team player, working on issues that improve people's economic opportunity and quality of life across this region. If given the opportunity, I look forward to serve as your team member and as a regional player in terms of representing you in the senate in the state of Louisiana. So I would appreciate your consideration this fall on the 12 October ballot for Michael Reese for senate in District 30. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon.
There, we have a few jurors we'd like to... Mr. Juror, or Mr. McMillan?
Yes, sir.
Mike, thank you for coming today, and thank you for what you've done for keeping Fort Polk on the forefront throughout our nation. It's very important. It's a very big economic driver for our nation. The only other thing I didn't hear you mention was I know you're very strong supporter of the I-10 Bridge.
No, that's absolutely right. You know, and that's been the interesting thing. There's a lot of conversations as you enter this arena. You're pressed by a lot of trade associations, business and industry, the Southwest Alliance, where I just spoke a few days ago, where we received an update. We understand the drastic need for quick investment there, and I think that we have a real opportunity with people like me, with fresh faces and fresh minds, that are interested in attacking some of those investments, thinking outside the box, and doing some creative solutions to make sure we get it done as quickly as possible.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, Mr. Reese, thank you for coming.
You know, hearing all the regionalism coming out of your mouth, I appreciate that.
One of the major hurdles that we'll be facing pretty soon is the watershed initiative from the state, and it's beginning to bring all of this region together, as large as maybe 12 parishes.
Yes, sir.
So I'm looking to support people who understand watershed management and are willing to help with that, because the state's kind of said, "We want you guys to do this." Well, I think you've done a lot of that in your, the service to your community.
Yes, sir.
So if you were to go on in this endeavor, I look forward to working with you and maybe trying to get this collaborative effort put together. So thank you.
I sincerely appreciate that. And as you well know, across Senate District 30, the issues related to water management along the Sabine River and those impacts across three parishes that would be in the district that I would serve is vitally important to those constituents. And it's been something I hear constantly, and I know it's something we've got to be able to address collectively across a very large region.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Bears?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad you brought up the Sabine River Corridor.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's, in my district, the Vinton, Niblets Bluff area.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, there's a lot of question marks every year, you know, when the gates come open, and I would hope that should, like Mr. Scott said, should you be successful in this endeavor, you know, working with the SRA and working in that arena, discussing topics as, do they need to be selling power anymore?
Right.
Is it that lucrative of a deal, or can they make it just selling water? So those are big questions that the folks along Sabine River, you know, want to know is how much longer is FERC going to be involved with that project? So I'm glad to have someone like you that, you know, understands it from a bigger picture. So good luck to you.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. I met with the Board of Commissioners from Niblets Bluff just last night at the Vinton Town Hall to better understand their issues specifically, but certainly hear the same message up and down the river. It is a highly complex issue as it relates to water sales, to industrial customers down river, as well as power generation, as well as reservoir management. But this, whoever gets elected senator will appoint six of the members to the Sabine River Authority, six of the board members, so it's vitally important that not only I be educated, but that as we go forward, we appoint board members that represent the interest of those constituencies down river.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have any other?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Moving on to item five, appearance by Dr. Lacy Cavanaugh, Regional Medical Director of the Southwest Regional Office of Public Health. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Lacy Cavanaugh. And address?
Yes, ma'am.
707A East Preon Lake Road in Lake Charles.
Thank you, ma'am. You have the floor.
I have a presentation this evening, just an update on health within Region 5, and I've got some specific numbers for Calcasieu Parish for you. I am new to this role in Office of Public Health. I just became the Regional Medical Director in January. I'm very excited to be here. I've been practicing in Calcasieu Parish for seven years, and actually came to the area for my training at Memorial Hospital with the residency program. So I'm excited to be here, and I thank all of you for your attention. And I try to go quick, because I know that you have a lot of important stuff to talk about. So just a little bit about Office of Public Health, to help you understand the breadth and scope of the work we do. We are a big organization, huge, 1,100 people across Louisiana, 63 health units. We have two here in Calcasieu Parish and six within the region. And we do a whole lot of work, not just traditional work. You often think of the health units as public health, but they are a small piece of public health. We also monitor the food that people eat here to make sure that it's safe. We look at the water systems and make sure that our water is safe for our residents to drink. We collect a lot of statistics on reportable diseases and deal with things like TB and HIV. We also do direct care services within the health units. So there's a lot of work that happens within Department of Health, and our mission is really to make sure that we create an environment that allows all people, regardless of who you are, to reach their maximum health ability. So that's kind of our mission. I've got this slide here, and one of the, this is a story that really stuck with me whenever it comes to looking at what's important with health. This is a World War II fighter plane. And during the war, they were kind of trying to figure out, why do we keep losing planes? And so they did a statistical analysis, of course, and drew up a map of all the planes that would return back from the field and where they had bullet holes in them, to try to determine how to make the plane stronger. And so they looked, and as you can see, the red dots, they said, "You know what? We need to reinforce those areas that look like they're getting hit." So they reinforced those areas, continued to send planes out into the field, and, but yet, we still kept losing them. So somebody who was really smart said, "You know what? Maybe we need to look where we don't see them," because those are the ones that go out and they never come back. They never come back for us to see, right? And so health, I think, is a lot like this, that sometimes we have to look where you don't see. The obvious, you know, is not always the answer to the solution. So this here is a slide that talks about health outcomes. And at the top, you see two measures, quality of life and length of life. And the map I'm about to show you of where Calcasieu Parish is within the state is based on those two factors. So how long does somebody live, and how healthy are they when they live? But all those factors underneath there, health behaviors, like whether someone smokes, diet and exercise, alcohol and drug use, sexual activity, do they have access to care? All those things are small pieces. And actually, clinical care, most people think that clinical care, so whether or not you have health insurance, and whether or not you end up at the doctor's office or the hospital, people think that that is what determines our health. And when you look at the map, you see that only 20% of your overall health outcome, so how long you live and how well you live, only 20% is the care that you receive within our healthcare system. The rest of it is behaviors and economic factors and the environment that we live in. So the places that you don't always notice or see or think about as related to health. This is where we are in Calcasieu. So the darker colors have worse outcomes, the lighter colors have better outcomes. We are ranked 21 within the state, so we are pretty good in comparison to the rest of the state, but you also have to remember that Louisiana is 50th. So we're kind of at the top third of 50th place.
Yes.
So this is drilling down into a few of those health behaviors, and I'm not going to talk about any of these in particular. I just wanted you to kind of get a sense of kind of where Calcasieu Parish is on some of the measures. For example, smoking, we're better than most of the rest of Louisiana's average, but we're still not anywhere near the rest of the country. Obesity, we kind of hover in right with the averages in Louisiana. We actually, one of our problem areas is teen births. So this is measured in per 100,000 people, and we have about 44 per 100,000. So we're actually significantly behind the rest of Louisiana there. And when we actually break that down based on race, you can see that there's a huge disparity and divide there, which is not good and not appropriate. So there's definitely a lot of work to be done, is the point of this slide. Contrary to popular belief, everyone always thinks that we, here in Louisiana, we drink more. Actually, the studies show that we don't drink more, but we do drink and drive more. So there are target areas that we could actually make an impact on. These are some of those social and economic factors, and I'm sure that you all hear about these things all the time, housing problems, our poverty rates, our violent crime rates, our injury deaths, our education system. But you know, all of these factors go into health. All of them do. They're all very related to the overall outcome and our health measures and the fact that we're last, which we need to fix. So I just want you to understand how many things go into this. And this is an example of a drill down into one of those, in particular with education. So this was actually done in another country that has universal access to healthcare. So everybody has access to go to the doctor. And people who had better health had more education, even when we take away the fact that some people don't have access to care here. So in other countries, everybody has access, but there's still a disparity in outcome based on education and based on many of these other social factors. So just having insurance alone is not protective. And this is an example to tell you about why public health works. So this goes through contagious diseases, several of them, that used to kill large numbers of our population. Back in the 20th century, I mean, there were huge numbers of people who died from these diseases. We have vaccines now. You can see how much the rates have decreased, and we in Louisiana do a pretty good job of vaccines. Our young children don't always get vaccinated on time. Calcasieu, we're around 60. This is based on Lynx, which is the system that we use to track childhood immunizations. But by the time they enter kindergarten and get into our school system, mostly everybody is vaccinated. Our exemption rate for people who choose not to get vaccinated is very low. So we are actually protected from all of the outbreaks that you hear about right now with measles and mumps that are all over the national news. But when we look at another vaccine called HPV, this vaccine protects people against cancer, against cervical cancer, which is a sexually transmitted virus that 80% of the population has. So almost everybody in this room probably has this virus, you know? And we have a vaccine that can prevent it and can keep people from dying from cancer, and we've got a 30% rate on that. So we could definitely do more there. This is STDs. We don't do too well on STDs either. We have pretty high rates there. Most of those are young people. One in five new HIV diagnoses are young people, and even though young people only account for about 50% of the population that's sexually, 25% of the population that's sexually active, they represent 50% of all of the STDs. So we're number one, and number two, and number three on everything there. And so this is a graph just showing, I was talking about healthcare reform. So healthcare reform kind of bends the curve a little bit, but this is the part that you don't see. If you work earlier in the system on prevention, before people get to the point that they are expending a lot of money on healthcare, that's where you really have an opportunity to save and make a difference. So in terms of what can we do about all this in public health, well, public health 1.0 is kind of basic foundational public health. So that's our clean drinking water and our food sanitation and our vaccines. Two is when we developed core functions in terms of safety net care, so the health units, you know, being able to provide services to folks, direct clinical services. But where we're aiming for now is public health 3.0, which is collaboration and consideration of health in all policies and cross-sector involvement to try to solve the problem. And that's, I think, where we're headed. And our health units, I mean, we do do a lot of direct care services right now, but really, my vision for the future is to transform those and for them not to just be a place that people come to get tested for STDs or to get WIC services, but to actually become a community health hub that still provides foundational, basic safety net care, but that also is kind of an incubator and a collaborator to build bridges with other organizations and other groups to try to tackle some of these big problems that we have. And we always use the terms upstream and downstream, and, you know, right now, we do a lot of downstream work, but I'm really hoping that eventually we can work more upstream to improve, to improve all of these measures. And this is just, I'm going to leave you with the last statement of kind of what I see for our vision for the future. So I see local health departments of the future will be a source of knowledge and analysis on community and population health, a convener, coalition builder, and mobilizing force to build health considerations into all aspects of community planning and action, a steward of the community's health, assuring that the policies and services needed for a healthy population are in place, and a partner of the clinical care delivery system in developing information about effectiveness and appropriateness of service delivery. So that's where I want to go. And I appreciate your time, and I hope that we can be collaborators in the future on some of these initiatives, and I would be happy to talk with any of you individually about any specific measures or questions that you have.
Questions?
Mr. President. President White, if you don't mind, I'd like to add, and I want to thank Dr. Cavanaugh for coming. Just kind of refresh everybody, Dr. Fauch retired earlier in the year, and this is the position that she now holds. She came and met with us very early on, and many of our missions overlap. As you know, we own the health unit buildings, the parish does, Police Jury does, but if you think about our animal services department, mosquito control, those are basically public health purpose departments, and we have others, too. So we have a lot of interest in what they do and they, what us, what we do, and we have instructed, we've let Lacy know that the government channel, our social media, we can be an outlet for all this information, which all of your constituents need and appreciate. And I think the direction they're going is very helpful for all of us, and she's been passionate, and you can tell when you talk to her, you can tell when you listen, and we appreciate her being here and her passion for it, and glad she's here.
Thank you.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you. Dr. Fauch was a tremendous doctor for our parish. You've got big shoes to fill, but listening to your report tonight, I'm thrilled to have you in that position. If we can maybe get yearly updates, we'd love to have you back. Thank you for being here, and thank you for all the information you gave us tonight, and you're a tremendous resource. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, ma'am, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on to item six, is the hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM? Ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said property should not be condemned.
Need to wait, Mr. President.
I know it's not 6:00 yet, so we're going to move to 7:00. Take appropriate action on applications of liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane?
We don't have any applications before you tonight, so no actions necessary.
Somebody jumped the gun on that, right? Thank you, Mr. Crane. Moving on to item eight, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices in the regular monthly budget to actual comparison. I have a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Abshar. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item now in consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting, Police Jury dated May 23rd, 2019. I have a motion by Mr. Fornum and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries.
Mr. President, if I could, could I ask if, y'all wouldn't mind coming back to item 10, because Alberto does have a short presentation, and it's going to go past the 6 o'clock, if you don't mind, maybe skipping to 11?
That's great. Skipping to item 11, consideration of adopting ordinance creating prospective voting precincts within Calcasieu Parish for the purpose of establishing block boundaries for the federal decisonal census.
Move on 11.
Second. Motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? 11 carries. 12, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 2896, Highway 171 North and Ward 1, rezone from central business, commercial, C3, and agricultural to light industrial to allow light industrial development. I have a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Brain to rezone? To rezone. Any discussion? Any objection? The item is rezoned. 13, consideration of adopting an ordinance, amending ordinance number 6405 to allow a revised site plan of aggregate parking areas.
Move to rezone?
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bears to rezone and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Oh, Mr. Crane?
Just a correction, it's not a rezone, it's, they're actually, y'all are amending the site plan. So the property's already rezoned, so I don't know if that makes a difference.
Move to amend. I just saw the RZ, I'm sorry.
All right, so we have a motion to amend and revise the site plan by Mr. Bears and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item 14, no action necessary, the applicant has withdrawn their request. 15, consideration of adopting resolution approving the submitted project severity package, the Louisiana Office of Community Development, an amount of $2 million for the public facilities project, water, sewer, or streets to be located within the unincorporated area of Calcasieu Parish. I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Gilery. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. It is now 6 o'clock. Ms. Kathy, remind me to start back at 10?
Yes, sir.
All right, moving back to item six, ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said property should not be condemned. Item A, 2333 Duplesschand Lane, Moss Bluff area.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Robinson?
This is one house and one accessory building. The owner of record is Ralph Robert Newman Jr. Edox. We're recommending both of these structures be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Move to condemn.
Second. Based on chimney?
Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? We have a motion to condemn by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Abshar. Any discussion? Any objection? Mr. Landry?
Can they show pictures of the house? I mean, what is that, the accessory building? That looks terrible, but...
Well, that's the house. If you keep going, the accessory building's on there, too. They just have to keep going.
That's the house?
Yeah, it's burnt.
Oh, okay. All right. That's good. Thank you. I've seen enough.
That item is condemned. Item B, 2211 Manhide Road, the Blue Settlement area.
This is one manufactured home. The owner is a Pauline Mitchell, and we're recommending this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
Have any pictures or anything we can see?
We do have photographs, yes. I don't know where they are, but they should have them.
What are they slipping in that communication room?
You also have them, if you choose, on your screen, if you want to hit the attachment.
Please move to, for condemn.
To condemn? I have a motion to condemn by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Hearing none. That item is condemned. C, 1785 PL Miller Road and 6797 Highway 3059 Laboue Settlement area.
Please move to condemn.
Second. This, this is two manufactured homes on these properties, and the owner is a Richard Lynn Fusiler. We're recommending that this, that both of these structures be condemned and removed in thirty days.
We have a motion and a second to condemn by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Collins. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on C? Anybody in the audience would like to speak on item C? Do we have any discussion? Any objection? C is condemned. Item D, 4127 Judy Drive.
This is one house. The owner of record is Charles Eric Shealy, and we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
Move to condemn.
Second.
I have a motion to condemn by Mr. Bears and a second by Mr. Collins. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on item D? Anybody would like to speak on item D? Do we have any discussion? Any objection? D is condemned. Item E, 980 Coontz Road, north south area.
This is one manufactured home. The owner is a Sarah Florence Parker Larson, and we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
Move to condemn.
Second.
I have a motion to condemn by Mr. Gilry and a second by Mr. McMillan. Anybody in the audience would like to speak on E? Anyone in the audience would like to speak on item E? Hearing none. Any further discussion? Mr. Bears.
Thank you, sir. Just interesting, we haven't seen anybody speak up. I'm, I'm guessing that you guys have talked to these folks, and they're all pretty much on, I mean, they know that we're coming, and by their, by their non-attendance, I guess, I guess it's...
Yeah, we do by law, by the ordinance, we do have to try to notify them, and some people do not accept their letters, so we follow the ordinance, and we do a public notice in Lake Charles American Press. Plus, we do try to serve, physically serve the notice to them.
I got you. So, so they, they may respond once they see the condemnation.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Any objection? E is condemned. F, 3087 Highway 3059 northeast Lake Charles area.
This is one commercial building. The owner is a Mohammed Kabir, and we're recommending this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
Move to condemn.
Second.
I have a motion to condemn by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Fornum. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item F? Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Mohammed Kabir.
Thank you, sir.
And my house address is 1001 McColl Street, Lake Charles.
Thank you, sir. Anything you'd like to say, you'd like to say on this, or tell us about it?
Yeah, actually, it's a commercial building, and I would like to get thirty days period of time, so I can fix the building for rent it out, or for sale, something like that.
Mr. Robinson, is this building worth salvaging? I mean, the, the amount of...
If I cannot fix it, I will just demolish the building.
You're going to demo the whole building?
If I cannot repair.
Mr. President.
Mr. Crane.
Our, our records, I had Mr. Robinson checking our occupational license department to see if any business had been located here for any period of time. We don't have any record of anything being in here since 2002. That's as far back as our records go. We'd have to go back in some more records to find that. So, at least seventeen years, this thing has not been, you know, occupied with a business.
Mr. Landry.
Mr. Kabir, how long have you owned this property?
2009.
Oh, ten years. I mean, had you said, "I just bought it two or three months ago," that would be a whole different story. But, if you've owned it that long, and it's in this condition...
I mean, I just bought the property like this. It was like this.
You bought it when?
In 2009.
That property was like this?
It was like this.
Right. So, you're talking about fixing. I guess you're going to do an evaluation, and if it's not worth fixing, you're going to tear it down.
It's not worth it, we just demolished it.
So, how long is that going to take you?
If it demolish, I need at least two months.
Two months? Yeah, you're going to have to do it faster than that. I mean, if we go ahead and condemn it, he's going to have thirty days, is he not? I mean, I would think, and is there any way y'all could just work with him? I mean, if he gets into it in the next couple of weeks, and that he can see that, hey, I can fix it, and he comes in and gets a building permit? What, what would happen then, Mr. Crane?
Well, Mr. Landry...
Of course, once we condemn, we condemn.
What we would want is a detailed list of how this building is going to be brought up to...
Yeah.
Standards.
It looks pretty rough.
Oh, yeah, it's pretty rough. I, I, I think it's, it's not cost-effective to do it. Certainly, you know, you can give him thirty days to evaluate it, see, but we've evaluated it.
You know, I don't know whoever district that's in. I mean, I would support giving him thirty days, but the only problem with that is, we've given, he's had it for ten years. That's, that's, that's kind of the problem with the thirty days.
Mr. Fornum.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Robinson, how many times have we been out to this piece of property to cut the grass or do some sort of maintenance to it? This gentleman's owned it for ten, and somebody else that was in disrepair for seven more years past that, it looks like. So, how many ti- how much money do we have invested in this property from a maintenance standpoint? Or have we recouped any of that?
I want to say about a year or so ago, we had to clean up quite a bit of junk on the property. And we've had some instances where people were parking, you know, campers there, and just abandoned vehicles, and stuff like that. And we did have to clean it up, but they did pay for the cleanup cost of that. But, I'm just going to tell you all, I've personally been in the building, and it's, it's scary.
Well, you know, it's, it's a, it's a matter of a yes and no. We don't get to make the choice of whether he wants to spend a million dollars to fix this building up. That's, that's his choice. But, uh, oh man, time's, time's time. It's, it's time to tear it down. Thank you.
Mr. Bears.
I believe Mr. Landry kind of summed it up, you know, it's ten years, ten years and thirty days. I don't understand why, why now? We're going to get a plan together to, to, to save this building. It hasn't been a priority for ten years. And then, it sounds like it's, it's something that we frequently have to go back and babysit. We got to get it situated.
Mr. McMillan.
Thank you. I'd like to, if I could, Mr. Crane, to bring that building back up to code, electrical code, and different codes that we need to get that building to. Do you see that as a possibility? It's, it's, it looks to be in pretty bad shape. I'd just like your evaluation.
Well, I, I think it's cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you're going to probably spend more than it's worth in this condition. It's not, it's not impossible.
Yeah.
But, it's just, it's cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
You, you don't really know what you're going to get into, because you're going to have to tear walls out, and things like that. So, it, it's really hard to say.
It's just, I, I wanted to ask that question, so you would know that. It's going to be pretty much cost prohibitive to redo this building. You do have thirty days from now, from this condemnation, if we don't give you an extra thirty days to make a decision on that. And with it being there like it is, in that bad a shape for ten years, it's time to replace that building, clean that lot up. I'm sure there's a lot of neighbors that are not really happy with this situation, and we would lend for you to maybe put in something new there and move forward in a, in a good situation. Would just be my opinion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Scott.
Yeah, I don't think condemning the property is going to change him trying. We can rescind it if he does what he says he's supposed to, so I'm in favor of condemning it, and the ball's in his court. Make it right, and we can talk about that later. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Collins.
Yeah, I'd like to give him an extra thirty days to see what he can do with, and then come back to us. Because I'm looking at this fellow here, he probably didn't have all the information that he needed to do what he have to do. So, I'm in favor of giving him thirty days, and if we look at it, if he doesn't do anything with it, then we'll condemn it.
Would you like to rescind your first motion and make a second motion?
I went through on the second.
All right, so we've rescinded the first one, and Mr. Collins has made a new motion to give him an extra thirty days on this property, and it was seconded by Mr. Landry. Any further discussion? Mr. Scott.
So, we're deferring for thirty days. Is that the motion? I mean, we can't just, that's, okay, just making sure. Thank you.
In the thirty days, we'll see what he have done with.
Sounds good, so we'll see him again in a month, correct?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Any further discussion? Any objection? It's deferred for thirty days. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item G, 193 Goodman Road, east Lake Charles area.
This is one manufactured home. The owner is a Brienne S. Braxton, and we're recommending this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
Move to the... Move to demolish it for thirty, in thirty days.
We do have a speaker on this item. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Yvonne Lennon. My mailing address is 193 North Goodman. Right now, I'm currently residing temporarily in our rental property at 195 North Goodman Road, next door to this unit. What you see here was like what this gentleman was saying earlier. My husband is sick, he needs a double kidney transplant, and he kept getting sick, and he almost passed away in December. Come to find out, they had a little bit of mold around the front door, and he would sleep there all the time, on his dialysis machine. And when we took the sheetrock down, we noticed dampness in the insulation, so we took the insulation down around that window, and noticed that the OSB was rotten from behind. You couldn't see it from the outside, because there was siding on the building. So, when we got to looking into it, the manufacturer who manufactured this home never put the sheeting that goes on top of the OSB protective sheeting. And we were trying to contact the mobile home company to find out why they didn't put it on. This was one of the FEMA trailers that were built in a speedy process after Hurricane Rita. And it was bought at an auction. And once it was bought at an auction, it became as-is, and so they're no longer responsible for this. But, there's been a new law that went into place that Mr. Edwards signed that said, it's an emergency law that says that repairs can no longer be made on mobile homes unless you go through the Mobile Home Coalition, Coalition in Baton Rouge and get permission. Well, they say that, and all I need to do here is replace the OSB and put my, I went and purchased, everything is inside of the home. All the materials have been there since January. But, I could not do any work on this mobile home because of this new law that went into place. And they told me that I have to hire an engineer or an architect to be able to replace the OSB. I'm not messing with any electrical, I'm not messing with any plumbing, but I have to hire an electrician, I mean, an engineer or an architect to be able to take down OSB, put it back up, and put my sheeting that's supposed to go on there, and then put my siding back up. And I have been unable to get a permit, and so it's just been sitting. I've been, I've been to the permits office, I've contacted numerous different people. Ms. Katie up there, she's been trying to help me, Ms., I've contacted the people in Baton Rouge. And, and then there's another issue. This has been a family piece of property that we lived on. Now, I own this mobile home. I have my bill of sale, I own this mobile home. The mobile home, we purchased this property in 2014 from my sister-in-law. There is a deed for sale with, with the records department here at Calcasieu Court's office. And she was supposed to come and sign the property, like officially sign it over, and she never did that. We've contacted her.
Mr. President, if I, if I can, I'm sorry, Ms. Braxton. Right now, it's, it is a motion to defer, so the comments really have to be on the deferral. So, I think Ms. Braxton is going to get some more time, and we'd also...
The motion was to condemn.
I'm sorry, but there was no second either.
Mr. McMillan's seconding.
My notes are horrible, and I apologize.
Basically, I'm, I'm really just stuck in a rock and hard spot, because I can't force her to come and sign some papers. I talked to my attorney, and he's going, he's going to try to file something against her, because she violated our deed agreement, or, and I have it here, she had thirty days back in 2014 to come and put the property into our name, and she didn't do that. And so, it's going, it'll become a legal situation. But, I am, I really, I want, I want to be back in my home. I'm staying in a two-bedroom right now, and it's really hard with, you know, my husband being sick, and I have a teenage son, and I just got custody of my grandbaby. So, it's really hard. I want to move back into my home, but, you know, with this new law that's gone into place, and it's ridiculous. I think it's absolutely ridiculous, because this is a newer, it was a newer home. I mean, I have pictures of what the inside of my home looks like on a normal basis, and this new law is just keeping me from doing anything. I mean, I, I've got $2,000 worth of materials just sitting there that nothing can be done with, because I can't get a permit.
All right, so legally, right now, you do not own the property. Is that what I'm hearing?
I have a deed for sale of the property. It's paid for, the property's paid for.
I understand you've got money in it, but legally, right now, you, you do not own it, correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
No. And to y'all, I mean, and the records, no. But, I mean, it was lost at a tax sale, and I went and re, and paid for the taxes to get the property back, because I wasn't getting none of the information. They keep sending everything to Brienne Braxton, but they have the information for me in the system as a, as having interest in the property. And so, they allowed me to purchase the property back, but that's still not good enough to them, that I have to go through all kind of different avenues to be able to get everything, you know. You have, there's all kind of rules and stuff that you have to follow with the permits department, so that's not good enough for them.
Mr. Crane, help me understand this new law that she's talking about, because I, I have, I know a lot of people that do remodel trailers on a normal basis, and is there, is this really a new law stating?
I'm not sure. That's a good question. I'm going to have to verify that there is some sort of new state law that requires that. I'm just, I'm going to have to verify.
It, he, he signed it, and I believe it was December. It went into effect February of 2019.
Are you sure it's for all mobile homes and not RV campers?
All mobile homes, all mobile homes. And let me just explain, let me just say this, and how I feel about that. Everybody cannot purchase a home, a brick home, per se. I own a mobile home, and I feel like Mr. Edwards blatantly just punched everybody in the face that owns a mobile home, because he's saying that most people that own mobile homes, when they make repairs, the people that live in mobile homes can't afford to repair their mobile home properly. So, he's putting us, and, you know, it's sort of like a slap in the face by saying, oh, well, we're too poor. The poor people buy mobile homes, and, you know, wealthier people can afford real homes. Well, people do have to make repairs to their home, and this new law makes it so bad, that I don't know if anybody knows this, but when I talk to the people in Baton Rouge, you cannot change your kitchen faucet in your kitchen without getting approval through the Mobile Home Coalition in Baton Rouge.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Collins, I know this is in your area, would you... Mr. Collins, I know this is in your area. Would you, uh...
President, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw my motion so we can look into this and see what we can do to help this young lady out. Because we seen, I'm sitting here hearing from this lady, it's the only real place she has to live in. And I know it's probably some laws that we overlooking. So I'd like to make a motion to defer this thing for about thirty days and see what we can do to help her out.
Yes, sir.
And you're more than welcome, I mean, you're more than welcome. I'm home majority of the time. I take care of my sick husband and my new grandbaby. You're more than welcome to come to my property, and I can show you everything. I mean, we have materials sitting out underneath tarps, materials in the home. I need somebody to be able to help me, because no matter what I do, I can't get anything done. And this new law is ridiculous. You know, I can't do anything as a person, but maybe, you know, if we go higher up, there could be something that could be done.
Mr. Crane, can you please look into this new law that she speaks of and help this lady out within the thirty days?
Yes, sir. We'll definitely look into it and see what the rules are. If there've been some changes in the law, we'll be glad to look into that. And then we will contact her and let her know and try to guide her through that process.
And I would like an update on that as well. Mr. Forham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we even have the rightful landowner in front of us? So why are we even talking about this?
Yeah, in the records, she's not.
With this lady and not the rightful landowner. I mean, legally, she doesn't own the property, as far as we're concerned. So at that point, we're in, we're in, we got the wrong ship in the canal.
Well, I own the mobile home, though.
But this has to go against the property itself, right? So you have to be the rightful owner of the property, and whatever's on your property, it technically belongs to you.
Ma'am.
Mr. Crane.
And Mr. Gab, he may say this too, but she's the owner of that manufactured home. If we can identify that, we will, we will work with her to try to figure out what the proper procedure is for that mobile home. Now, you have a different landowner. We haven't spoken to her, so we're not sure.
It's a double, kind of a double issue.
It is, but we'll, we'll check into it and see.
I'm all for helping around. Don't get me wrong.
I think we do have a permit.
But we need to make sure we got the right audience in front of us.
I think we have a permit that was issued for the mobile home to be on the property. So I'm not really concerned about it at this point, but we'll work with her and figure out what steps she needs to go through if she can repair that structure, okay?
I mean, you have, there's people with the parish that are here in the building that know that I've purchased everything for this property. I paid over $8,000 for a septic system. I've put everything.
I fully understand that.
I mean, I have the deed for sale. I have the deed to the property. It's just, she hasn't made, the payment's been made. It shows it in the deed for sale, but she hasn't taken her final step in actually coming up here and signing it over.
I understand that. Mr. Gab, can you elaborate on this?
And again, now my notes are correct. There isn't, there's a motion to defer now. All we're talking about is that. And we don't, and we don't have a second yet to that motion.
Yes, we do. Mr. Landry, second it.
Okay, so that's good. We'll, I just wanna make sure that we have the right audience here when we take this up next time.
Sure.
Mr. Scott.
Mr. Crane, so, I mean, you're gonna look into this law pretty quick, 'cause I would hate to be issuing permits to anybody with a mobile home if, you know, I wanna make sure that, I know we can't tell them how to work on their mobile homes. We've run across this issue before, but we still offer permits for it. So I wanna make sure we don't offer any more permits if the governor said, you know, I don't wanna break his law. So just, just a thought.
Oh, yeah, we'll check on it. Pretty immediate, so.
Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion?
Just wanna mention one thing.
Course you do.
Mr. McMillan.
Within the next thirty days, you need to get that signature, and you need to get that property in your name if that property's been bought by you. So I would make every effort to do that also.
Well, I've been contacting her, and it's one of those in-law situations where we don't get along, and she just feels like she doesn't have to. And so, unless I can get Senator writing that says, hey, you need to, that's why I have to go get my lawyer involved. You know, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, item, is any objection? All right, that item is deferred for thirty days.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. Item H, staff recommends that the item be deferred for sixty days. Move to defer for sixty days.
Second.
I have a motion to defer for sixty days, and a second by, or, motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Gilroy to defer for sixty days. Any discussion? Any objection? Deferred for sixty days. Thank you, sir. All right, so we're going back to item ten. Thank you, Ms. Gab. Consideration of adopting ordinances amending the following ordinances with reference to Consolidated Gravity Drainage Districts, number one and two.
Make a motion, item A and B.
A, amend ordinance number 7188 Consolidated Gravity Drainage District, number one, West Calcasieu, to change the date of the first meeting to July 29, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. And approve the appointment structure and appointments of the following board members. Mr. Trahan, Mr. Perry, Mr. Goff, Mr. Fitz, Mr. Hudson Jr., Mr. Spencer, Mr. Stinson. B, amend ordinance number 7189 Consolidated Gravity Drainage District, number one, I mean, yeah, number two, East Calcasieu, to change the date of the first meeting to July 30, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. And approve the appointment structure and appointments of the following board members. Mr. Quinn, Mr. Schultz, Mr. Green, Mr. Whitler, Mr. Gober, Gober, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Leje. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan on both bullets and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion?
We've asked, we've asked Alberto just to give an update, if you don't mind, Mr. President. I think it'd be helpful with the...
Mr. Alberto, can you come up, please? Mr. Galan.
Be brief.
Need some water?
Alberto Galan, Office of the Administrator. I'd like to pull up that PowerPoint. No, I'm just teasing. No, this is, this is more of a, this is more of a report and an update rather than a presentation. The main reason is, is that this is, this was really what was recommended and what was adopted by the police jury early on, to be, have a seven-member board. We just could not legally do that per state law. Since that time, we've been able, through this legislature and with the help of Blade Morris, we've been able to pass local legislation authorizing the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury to increase the number of board members from five to seven to any consolidated gravity drainage district that exists in Calcasieu Parish, which we think is more representative of the parish. So now we have the legal authority to do so, which is why we're here today with this for consideration. That also leads into why the date of, the effective date we're requesting to be changed by a month. The reason behind that is to allow the additional two members, in addition to the other five, to be able to go through the process of being, of the appointment process and all, doing all the paperwork and whatnot, making sure that for the first board meeting, we can meet with all seven instead of meeting at the first meeting with five and then meeting at the second meeting with seven members. Just, that's for practical operational purposes. That's the reason. In addition, just real, real brief, I just wanted to take the opportunity to give an update. Just, a lot of you already know, but we've been working with a lot of the Gravity Drainage District leadership, including the board members and various working group meetings. And I'd like to commend all of the, all of the Gravity Drainage Districts and their leadership and the board members for not just being cooperative, but being proactive and diligent in their, what looks to be a desire to get this thing right. So they've gotten, they've, you know, we've worked well together, and we had recommendations. And what we're working towards is a, essentially a customized set of, set of operational policies and objectives and other things that fit for Gravity Drainage District operations while still falling within the recommended path the police jury recommended moving forward. And we're doing, we're making good progress with them so that this, this is the Consolidated Gravity Drainage Board product versus anything else.
Thank you, sir, for the update. Mr. Bears.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I too wanna thank Mr. Morris for taking the ball on this. You know, when this came out, you know, I was a big proponent of seven members, wanted to make sure to get this right, and I really appreciate them doing that, expediting that. And I appreciate the folks at the district level that trusted us, because there was a lot of moving, there was a lot of, you know, moving parts going on during this whole consolidation transition phase. And, you know, they were looking up to Big Brother, you know, not trusting what was going on. And I appreciate them trusting the process, sticking with us. I too have heard nothing but good from this whole transition phase. I've talked with the folks on my side, and they, you know, they're very excited because they see that this is, this is for the good, just like, you know, we were explaining. And I, I just, I'm glad to hear, I'm glad to hear that every, just the good news and that everybody's working together, and they see that this is gonna end up being better than they ever thought it would be. So thank you for all of your work and keeping those lines of communication wide open. I know that that's very appreciated at the district. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Gilroy.
Alberto, I wanna thank you and staff for working so hard on this project. This is a good project. Thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. President.
I also, I've talked to quite a bit of the board members on the east side, and several of them was totally against this before they become a board member, once we rolled this out. And now these members are thrilled to death about it. It's mind-blowing, the policies and procedures that were at other districts, that we have at other districts, and now are all becoming one policy and procedure. It's, I can't believe they operated on some of the procedures they had, to be honest with you, and to be effective. Clearly, they're not effective, because we're all one watershed here, and with all of us working together the way we're doing now, Calcasieu Parish oughta drain, hopefully. Thank you, Mr. Galan.
Mr. Latour.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo everybody, telling you thank you for the good job and to all the staff who put forth the effort into making everything work together and fit like it's going to. I do like the seven-member board. And I'd like to, next Wednesday at 6 o'clock, we're gonna do a little thing for the east side drainage boards. And I'd hope that everybody could show up to come at the Casey Hall. We're gonna have a little bit of food and hopefully a little bit of music. So all the jurors, hopefully you could come there and support the drainage boards for all the efforts. I think they've been around since the eighties, and they've done a lot for our parish, so thank you very much. I yield back.
Any further discussion? Any objection? Item ten, both bullets, passes. All right, moving on to sixteen. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the contract between the police jury and the Educational Treatment Council for the provision of treatment of other related services for the Juvenile Drug Court Treatment Program. I have a motion by Mr. Gilroy and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Sixteen carries. Seventeen, consideration of adopting a resolution for each of the following items as requested by facility management. A, approving the professional engineering contract for the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury Facility Backflow Preventer Maintenance and Improvement Project. B, approving the amendment to professional architectural contract for the Fourteenth Judicial District Family and Juvenile Court Project. C, approving an amendment to the professional architectural contract for the Coroner's Office and Additions Project. I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Latour on all bullets. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Seventeen carries. Eighteen, take appropriate action on the following bids and quotes and/or proposals received by the parish and purchasing agent. A, proposals for gentour services for multiple parish properties. Staff recommends that the proposal of Platinum Cleaning of Indianapolis LLC be accepted. B, Magnolia Building Improvement Project. Staff recommends that the low responsive and responsible bid in the amount of $290,000 of Pat Williams Construction LLC be accepted. C, clearing snagging of Kaiuchi Cooley lateral. Staff recommends that the low responsive and responsible bid in the amount of $325,032 of RD Spell Inc. be accepted. D, Preon Lake Park Boat Launch Lighting Project. Staff recommends that the low responsive quote in the amount of $126,898 of Shannon Smith Construction LLC be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Bram on all bullets. Any discussion? Mr. Gilroy.
Right quick, one question. On A, I was just wondering if the two, other two companies was local on the janitorial service?
RC cleaning is.
I knew RC. I was just wondering if the other company was local.
Name and position.
Dean Kelly, Director of Facility Management. We did have one local, RC cleaning, and Empire was out of Baton Rouge.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Bears.
It's amazing that somebody could be that cost-effective there and come all the way from Indianapolis to do it.
We're sure they're from Indianapolis.
What's that?
Are you sure they're from there?
It says it right here, Platinum Cleaning of Indianapolis. It might be Indianapolis, Texas. So I yield back.
Could be Indianapolis, Carlos. How about that?
Mr. Abshire.
Yes, Ms. Kathy, will you let show the record reflect that I abstained from this, from number eighteen?
All do, all bullets?
Yes, ma'am.
We have any further discussion? That item carries all bullets. Nineteen. I have a motion to adjourn and a second. We are adjourned.